Using my gavel for the first time ever. We have some really special guests here, so I want to get started and make sure we have time to hear from everyone. And just to get started, I want to introduce myself. I'm Susan Kinnon from the president of the school board. My colleagues here are here with me and their nameplates are all in front of them. And I just want to make a few remarks before we get started. And the first is to congratulate our high school on being the recipient of a Blue Ribbon Award this year. This is an award that comes from the Federal Department of Education. I didn't know a whole lot about it myself, but I did some reading this afternoon. And it really is quite special. You may not know there are 23,000 public high schools in our country. There's about another 3,600 private high schools. This award this year went to 53 high performing high schools out of those 27,000 high schools in our country. You know, the award is based on our performance on tests, but it's also based on an application that the school makes. And in our reading recap, I'm going to be linking to that application because if you have the chance to read through it, it's a wonderful summary of some of the things that make our school special, including our school climate and culture. In particular, our community engagement is evidenced by tonight's turnout and our focus on continuous improvement. So Dr. Keke, our director of curriculum, and Anne Meyer, our high school principal, are both in Washington today and tomorrow to receive that award. So it's very exciting. I also want to congratulate our leadership team on a really successful tri-states review, which just wrapped up, I think, last week. This is a process that we go through. It's like an accrediting process for our high school, like a peer review for those of us in industries that have that. And I had the chance to see some feedback from one of the accreditors who observed that there's something different about our students. And he attributed it in part to the agency they have over their education. In other words, their ability to make choices in things that they're interested in. And also just the really broad array of experiences available to our students. So it was really nice to see that. Congratulations to our leadership team and all of our faculty and staff. In other ways, we have a community that I think we can be, in many other ways, that we can be very proud of. I had the chance to attend the football game this past Saturday against Westlake and see the big, exciting victory where we claimed the Class C sectional championship. One of the most special things for me was how proud I was of our fans. It was really a great group of fans who conducted themselves with, you know, in a way that we should all be very proud of. So I want to wish the team good luck this weekend as they take on James O'Neal High School at the next postseason event. And our cross-country runners, I think, are also competing at states. So that's very exciting. I want to call attention to some recent programming on antisemitism. We had two workshops on Monday, October 30th that Joe Mercora organized. And then this coming Monday, we'll have, in partnership with the PTA, there will be a short documentary featuring an Auschwitz survivor who's interviewed by his great-grandson. It's a 19-minute documentary. It's really easy to find. If you're an HBO Max subscriber, you can find it there. It's on Amazon Prime Video. I've had the opportunity to visit Dachau myself. Obviously, a very moving experience. This documentary is moving in a very different way. It's very well done. So that will be shown on Monday. And the oh, the name of the documentary, the number on my great-grandfather's arm. And then a discussion will be facilitated afterwards. So that's a really great example, I think, of partnership between the school and the PTA to help families with resources. And then lastly, just given all of the events in the news these days, we wanted to call attention to places in the curriculum where students have an opportunity to learn and talk about current events. And this from Dr. Keke, who can't be here today. But students begin to explore current events in middle school social studies and continue throughout high school in their social studies and history classes. In some cases, current events are discussed within the classroom as situations arise that align with course content. And in other cases, students are assigned projects related to current events where they select one to read about, summarize the content for class connected to an enduring issue in history, and relate the past to the present. In addition, there's some new mini elective courses being run in the high school that explore content that includes, there's one called an international relations focus on China and other current topics of interest to the school community. So we're very excited about those new mini electives, and we're hoping there'll be other very interesting topics explored. And then Dr. Kelly has also focused on providing resources to families relating to events in the news to help facilitate those discussions at home. So very grateful to the community for the partnership in making sure our students continue their education at home and in school. So those are my remarks. And I think we're going to move right to the Bronxville Promise in Action with some of our special guests.
Yes, so please come up. This evening's presentation is an example of our commitment to communicating more effectively. And tonight, it relates to our Bronxville Promise in Action. In other words, how the Bronxville Promise plays out in our classrooms and beyond. We're delighted to have a representative of our third graders tonight under the leadership of Ms. Meg Hanson. And they're going to share with us their project-based learning experience that speaks to being engaged citizens and the heart of the promise. So welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name is Megan Hanson. I'm the third grade curriculum leader. And with me today, I have some brave third graders that are going to share the Bronxville Promise in Action. So the third grade social studies curriculum standards focus on communities around the world. In social studies, we examine communities, including our own. And our government curriculum involves asking the question, how do governments influence a community? We research monarchies, dictatorships, democracies. And we've been, sorry, and then we have the kids research that, and we have simulations for the students to experience these different types of communities around the world. This year, the third grade teachers focused on revising our curriculum to include the Bronxville Promise. To do this, we included a section on children's rights. Governments are responsible for the rights of a citizen. And according to the United Nations, all childrens also have rights. So we had the guiding questions. Why do children have rights? And how do we support these rights? Students generated questions and then researched one of four rights. These rights included, if you want to go to the next slide, access to education, food, clothing, safe home, protection of privacy, and students with disabilities. Students were able to generate questions and then interview professionals, the experts at Bronxville Elementary School that are responsible for protecting these rights of students. These people included Dr. Keke, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. David DiNuzzo, Director of Food Services, Mr. Brad Ashley, Director of Technology, Ms. Jenna Fornelli, Occupational Therapist. With their newfound knowledge, students create quilts that they are holding to display to the community, and they trick-or-treated for UNICEF to support students, children around the world. And now I have a couple of questions, and the students are going to share how the Bronxville Promise impacted them. So you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Liza, what did you learn about a child's right to access education?
I learned that not all kids get to go to school. They have to work in factories and sometimes get hurt. This is not fair.
Sophie, what is something new you learned from interviewing Dr. Keke about children's rights?
I learned Dr. Keke helps children get a good education by hiring good teachers and making sure the teachers know what the children are learning in school.
Good. Charlie, how did learning about a child's right to an education make you an engaged citizen?
I think once everyone knows about it, they can tell more people about it. And then you can tell others about it, and then everyone will know. And then they can do something, and then can affect the world a lot. For example, we collected money on Halloween for UNICEF. We also made quilts for people in the school to learn.
Thank you. Jax, how did learning about food, clothing, and safe home make you more empathetic?
It makes me more aware of how much food people have in other places. For example, some kids don't have enough food to eat, and that makes them feel very hungry and maybe not feel very good. I also learned that some families can't afford childcare, and that makes the parents have to go to work a lot, and the children have to take care of their brothers and sisters. So what we can do, we can donate food to a food drive, and they can donate to people in need.
Mason, how did Mr. Ashley teach you the importance of being a critical thinker as it relates to the child's right, protection of privacy?
If you want to be safe, you can't be super obvious. Some people use 1111 as a password, but that's very easy. For malware, they try to fish you into clicking on the malware. So you need to be a critical thinker, want to click on it and want not to click on it.
Cameron, how does learning about students with disabilities make you more empathetic?
All people with disabilities should go to school because they need help with things. And they can't stay home all day. For example, Ahmed had trouble with his legs, and he could not play soccer. So they figured out a way to let him ref game so he could be involved.
Thank you, third graders, so much for your help and share about the Bronxville Promise. Are there any questions or comments before we conclude?
Great job.
Oh my gosh, so good. Thank you so much. Really thoughtful.
You're good. You're welcome to go home and have your bedtime snack. You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda, we'd like to adopt a new template for superintendent evaluation. This is something that the board has considered in collaboration with Dr. Kelly. Each year, the Board of Education evaluates the superintendent of schools, and as part of this evaluation, we utilize a template that will guide the evaluation. The templates are required to be kept on file in the district clerk's office. And this year, after a review of third-party evaluation templates, we looked at the New York State School Board Association version and the New York State Council of School Superintendents. We've chosen the New York State Council of School Superintendents framework that is attached to the agenda on Board Docs. The evaluation's based on performance criteria is determined by the board. In other words, the goals we agreed on together. But it's also reasonably related to the duties and responsibilities of the superintendent sent forth in the employment agreement and the superintendent's own goals and objectives, which are mutually established each year by the board and the superintendent. So there's no vote required. We just wanted to call attention to this new template being filed in the district clerk's office. Next on the agenda, we have three sets of minutes. We had special meetings on October 30th. I think that was just to approve some spending for the flood cleanup costs. That was before the budget workshop that we had. And then we had a special meeting on November 8th more recently to have more time to review the tenure process and other items that involve particular persons. And then finally, we have the regular meeting from October 19th. Are there any questions or changes to those minutes? And can we vote to approve all of them? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Where's Dan?
I'm here.
Next, external audit.
Yes. Tonight, we have Heather Briggs. She's a partner from the Bonadillo Group. She's with us tonight with our 2022-2023 audit. The Bonadillo draft audit was reviewed in depth with the accountants by the audit committee. And what you see before you tonight is the final audit. The statements are marked as draft until approved by the board. And the representation letter, which Dr. Kelly and I signed this afternoon, is executed, which we've done. We'll then distribute the published copies to the board. And the audit comes with management recommendations in the areas of tax, cert, IRA, reserve amount. We need to get closer to the board target of $200,000. And the year-end closed process of more timely uploading of documents and extra classroom activity accounts, which is reviewing procedures with students and advisors. The related corrective action plans are required to be approved by the full board and then filed with the state education department. So with no further ado, we have Heather on, I guess it's Microsoft Teams tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Dan. Oh, I can hear myself. That's pretty bad.
We can hear you.
Okay. So Dan basically took all my thunder. We went over the audit with the audit committee in depth about a week ago. What I'll share with you is a high-level summary. And we can move over that. Okay. Let me know when you can see that.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So the deliverables that you have in front of you are the audit of the financial statements and the audit of the extra classroom financial statements. You also have the required communications letter. We're required to communicate with you certain elements after the audit is over. You also have the management letters for you to review. So the financial statements, you have an independent auditor's opinion in the front of the report. That is an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive. What that means is that we believe that your financial statements are presented fairly. In the back of the report, you have the Yellow Book or Government Auditing Standards report, and that talks to internal control over financial reporting. There were no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies to report, and no non-compliances noted. There was a new GAZB implement, but there was no material impact to the financial statements. That's GAZB 96, much like the leases that were implemented last year. This is for subscription-based information technology arrangements. Shouldn't you have had those? They would have been an asset and a liability, but you don't have any material ones to note, nothing longer than one year. There's also the management letter that you guys can review. And the audit of the extra classroom financial statements was an unmodified opinion also, and there is a management letter with that as well. I apologize. It's kind of hard to do this as I'm echoing in my own ear.
You sound fine on this end.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Any general comments about this? From my perspective, this sounds like a pretty strong, unqualified audit on many different levels. I'm enthused to hear this. Do you have any other general contextual, broader thoughts that you want to add to this?
Is that from my opinion?
Yep.
Well, you have an unmodified opinion. So again, that's the highest opinion you can receive.
Yep.
So it, you know, an audit isn't 100%. We all know that, right?
Sure.
But an unmodified opinion is the best one you can get.
I always try to get auditors to say it feels good.
You're not the only one.
I feel good about what you've presented today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on the audit committee at all?
You know, so there's three of us in the audit committee, Susan, Christine, and myself. We went through all the suggestions. One of the suggestions was a repeat from last year, especially, you know, extra classroom activity funds. You know, as many of you know, all these different activities, there's, I don't know, 40 different funds in there, money going in, going out. It's not always 100% accurate because they're waiting for receipts. So most has just seemed like minimal stuff. You know, people in the community know, you know, the focus of the audit committee is if we have any glaring, you know, corruption or misuse of funds, that's our priority, and the board has to sign off on that. So we're not, we're seeing minor things that have to be brought up, but they're pretty minimal.
And as Dan said, we had the opportunity to take a deep dive as a committee and ask a lot of clarifying questions. So that was helpful. That's right.
Yep. Well, thank you, Heather. We appreciate you being available tonight.
Not a problem. I appreciate the team's meeting.
Well, have a good night then. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Heather.
And thank you for all your work on the audit, Dan.
And thanks to Terry, our treasurer. She handles the lion's share, that's for sure. Now, Connie, do we have the motion to accept the audits and the corrective action plans? And the audit and the corrective action plans get filed with the, I think, the state comptroller's office. So they monitor those as well.
The resolutions are on the screen. Do you want to, we can take them one at a time, or we can do them as a group?
Let's take them as a group for the audit and the corrective action plans.
And then the transfer by itself?
Yes. And the transfer is to comply with, it's actually, one of the corrective action plans is to transfer some money from our tax, cert, IRA reserve, which has been overfunded since the, since the village went to full value assessment over 10 years ago. So we're finally bringing that in line with compliance by transferring up to $700,000 to the general fund, to the capital projects reserve. That's our plan.
Okay. And we're required now to, the tax reserve is required now to be only for specific claims. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's for claims that are in the pipeline. You have to demonstrate that the reserve is within the realm of what you can expect to pay on claims.
So it can still be an estimate, but it hasn't been?
Yeah. And since the, since we, you know, 15 years ago, we used to bond for tax cert claims because the village was not at full value assessment. So assessments are all over the place. But at full value assessment, there's not, you know, there's not much exposure to claims out there at all anymore.
Okay. Are there any other questions on any of this? Yeah. I mean, the audit committee had a chance to talk about it in more depth. So let's do, let's approve the audit and the corrective action plans, and then let's take the transfer separately.
So that's A through D?
So could we have a motion for the resolutions A through D? I don't think I need to read each one, do I? Okay.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then also a motion for Resolution E to transfer $700,000. oh, it says up to 700,000, from the tax cert reserve to the general fund balance for capital projects. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
So, good evening. A few more highlights I'd like to point out. Susan had mentioned the status of the Blue Ribbon Award for our high school. I'd also like to add one more. We've just been named a Platinum Distinction by the AP Honor Roll for our outstanding work in welcoming more students into AP courses and supporting them on the path to college success. According to its website, the AP School Honor Roll recognizes schools whose AP programs are delivering results for students while broadening access. The AP School Honor Roll offers four levels of distinction, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. The College Board's AP program allows students to pursue college-level coursework while still in high school. Through AP courses, each culminating in a challenging exam, the students can earn college credit and placement. As Ann Meyer was quoted, "We offer more than twenty different AP courses to provide our students with rigorous academic experiences that will prepare them to be successful in college and beyond." This recognition by the College Board acknowledges our commitment to enrollment in the AP program, the outstanding instruction our faculty provide in these courses, and students' hard work and dedication to their academics. So congratulations to our high school. Our seventh graders are in Williamsburg, and they're having a blast. I want to thank the faculty and staff who were willing to leave their own families for four days to help ensure that our children are having a great trip. They are scheduled to be back tomorrow evening. In the elementary school, the faculty are beginning their work of reviewing the new math standards. They're called Next Generation New York State Math Standards, and that way we can ensure that our students will be prepared to meet and even exceed these new standards. So thank you to Rachea for taking the lead on that, and as well as Ashley Chippa, our new math coach. I also wanted the community to know that based on feedback we've received from parents and students, we will be giving our students in sixth grade through eleventh grade an athletic survey. We want to get a better handle on what sports not only they are playing now, but if they'd be interested in a few others in lieu of what they're playing now, or even for those who are not playing some sports now. We want to glean interest. Some sports we've heard about, perhaps our students being interested in, include volleyball, softball, flag football. So we want to make sure that we have a good handle on what the interest is before we would then consider resources, field space, et cetera. So we're hoping to put that before our students before Thanksgiving. And I too wanted to mention that this Monday, November twentieth, the school is partnering with the PTA. You know, that's quite all right. But we'll only put it once in the summary. This HBO documentary, The Number on Great Grandpa's Arm, gentle and a moving depiction of life during the Holocaust. And we look forward to welcoming third through eighth graders with their parents to view this nineteen-minute documentary. And then we're going to facilitate two separate discussions afterwards. We're going to have our third through fifth graders and their parents with Lauren Keshner, our high school psychologist, and we'll have our sixth through eighth graders and their parents with Alyssa Diaguardo and some high school students. So we look forward to welcoming you all Monday evening, six o'clock, right here in the auditorium. And then lastly, I just wanted to offer a heartwarming congratulations to one of our finest, Ben Cornish, one of our high school science teachers, who just yesterday became a United States citizen. So now he holds dual citizenship with Australia and the United States.
Oh, that's great.
And we're very pleased, so.
That's great. So Dan, we're, oh, no, we're still with you on personnel. Thanks, Dr. Kelly.
I think it's time for Matthew Kerr.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Starting off, sports this past weekend was very successful. As mentioned already, the varsity football team went up to Arlington High School on Saturday and beat Westlake High School thirteen to seven. That marks our first section title since 2010, the year we won the state championship. We play at Mayapack High School this Saturday at noon, playing James O'Neill, the defending state champs. Also, last Saturday, the boys and girls cross-country participated in state championships. The boys finished second, and the girls finished third, both having won their respective sections the past week. Two weekends ago, girls tennis came away with the team state championship. This marks the first time in tennis team competition that one school has held both the boys and girls state titles. Also, two weekends ago, the fall play held three performances of The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. It was directed by our very own Mr. Cross and was a great experience for all involved. Yesterday marked all of the seniors sending in all of the early applications, with quarter one ending a week ago and grades being released today. In that same vein, I finally found out that my older brother and sister were in fact not exaggerating about the junior year workload. Finally, juniors are beginning the preparation for the college admissions process, with junior year college admissions workshops starting shortly and a Zoom being held this past Thursday with the junior class with our guidance counselors and college admissions officers.
Thank you. And we'll get you a nameplate. That's great. Thank you very much. Now we're back to you.
Now we're back. So you have before you this evening items A through X for personnel. They include a few leave replacements, revisions to leave replacements because some babies came earlier than expected, medical leaves, as well as you'll see some overages, and this is specific to the mini-electives that we're piloting, second quarter, as well as overages in our speech-language department to cover a medical leave, short term. In addition, we have a few revisions to our co-curricular stipend list and as well as approving a school bus driver, which is very exciting. So I look to the Board for their consideration of items A through X, please.
If there are no questions, could we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
For items A through X, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The Board has received a financial report for the month of October, wherein we now have all contracted payrolls encumbered, and I'm comfortable projecting that we will generate about $100,000 in surplus from payroll, as vacancies and replacements are yielding some savings. All, furthermore, as far as expenditures go, all of the sanitary backup recovery invoices are in, and those costs will be around $100,000, which we will absorb into maintenance budget, so there's no need to increase the budget at all. Revenues continue to project a surplus as both non-resident tuition and interest earnings will be favorable this year. Thus, I'm forecasting nearly $600,000 in a revenue surplus, which sets us up nicely going into the budget season. And there is actually a typo. We're projecting about 900,000, not 800,000 at this point, for interest income. Everywhere else the math works. And the way that sets us up nice for budget season is we have a hole in our budget every year, which is, we kind of planned for. It's typically been about $500,000 that we appropriate to offset the tax levy in next year's budget. And projecting over $600,000 in surplus at this point sets us up nicely going into budget season. Speaking of that budget season, we've been provided with the likely range for the teacher retirement system requirements for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The range was 9.75 to 10.25 percent. The current rate is 9.76. So it's expected to remain relatively flat, which is good news, since the current line, budget line item for this is over $2.3 million. So a half a percent increase would not impact that budget greatly. And we are currently gathering data and putting together the first draft of the budget, which is targeted for distribution to the Board by mid-December.
Dan, on the, on the cost for the sanitary backup, I'm sure this was just my wishful thinking, but did we come in a little higher than we thought we were going to?
No, I thought it was about 100,000.
Okay.
And it's going to be about 100,000. And it's all, virtually all in overtime labor costs as the cleanup crews were working basically through the night over that weekend.
Okay.
And I think maybe one replacement to go along with that. But it was, you know, for the amount of rain we got, this was nothing.
Yeah.
Dan, did you have a chance to work with the guys to check out that, that alternate pipe exit from the building?
We can't really test it until it happens.
Okay.
You know? The only way to test it would be to really flood the system, and, you know, we don't really, we don't want to do, create our own flood downstairs. Because diverting the, diverting the storm water that comes, or the groundwater that comes out of the sump pump underneath the innovation center where the old boiler room was, which was the lowest point in the building, that goes into our sewage system. And diverting that would just send it out on the Pond Field Road, and we don't really want to do that until we have to. And without a huge rain event, we don't get enough water in there to run that. I have three financial action items. They're all contracts for services. We have a contract with Dr. Militana for medical services, game attendance and physicals, behavior analysts for direct and indirect, behavior analytic and behavior intervention services, and Colino Sullivan, who provides us with transition consultation services related to IDPs. And if anybody has questions on those, you can talk to Rachel.
The last one, I think, was the transition services, right? For our special education students.
Right, so we want to make sure that as students in our special classes age out at the age of 21, that we are working closely with the students and the families to help ensure they have a good plan for post-graduation.
Mm-hmm. And the physician, it was helpful. I think you provided us information on what we expected the total cost would be.
Yeah.
It was like 33,000 and change last year, I think, for the physician. You don't have to look it up.
Yeah.
Not, not big numbers?
Yeah, none of them were big numbers for these three in particular.
Are there any other questions? Could we have a motion to approve contracts A through C?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the foundation grant?
Ah, yes, we have an off-cycle foundation grant. And it's for the Mental Performance Coach, for $16,000. This grant extends a similar grant through the whole school year. The feedback that Joe Haven and we've all received for this has been very positive. And we're recommending that this grant be approved and accepted, and as always, with tremendous gratitude for the foundation. They do so much for us that we would not be able to, you know, do under normal circumstances ourselves.
So moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bronxville School Foundation.
I have a facilities update. There's no facilities action items, but the outdoor classroom is progressing. If you've been on Midland Avenue, it's kind of in the corner between the pumps and Hayes Field. Looks, it looks really nice. You know, it'd be just in time for winter. But, but we're, I think we're just waiting on some building materials for the bench. That'll try to prevent it from being done next week. But, and as requested, Connie, I think you have a picture of the pavilion-like structure that we're planning for the pumps? I did at some point.
Drum roll, please.
Yeah, this is going to test our technology right now.
And while Connie's looking for that, we're actually, we had a, we had a meeting prior to the executive session tonight of the Facilities Committee. We're in, we're starting to really dig down and prioritize the five-year facilities plan needs. There it is, all right. That, we're looking at an open-sided structure with a roof. And more than anything else, we need protection from the UV rays. And the roof has got, is more complex than just banging on some steel paddles because the roof has to be, we have to be able to take it off and put it back on if we ever need to service or replace a pump, because the only way that happens is with a crane. So that's, that's what, that's kind of the, the style the Facilities Committee has decided on. And it should, you know, there'll definitely be an upgrade from
The chain link funds.
You know, grow green ivy in the middle of winter there, so.
Would we still have the chain link funds?
Probably, because we have to secure it.
Yeah.
And I'll add just one, may I add one point here?
You had, you were on the committee.
We looked at a number of different options, and they vary in pricing. This, this one, this one was the affordable one that provided the protection we needed to the pumps. And so the committee has looked long and hard at this one, and I think this is the route to go. We are getting some bids to figure out if there's a way to do this in an economical way, but this will cover the pumps. The pumps are doing a really good job, as we've seen, in protecting the school in flood events, and we want to make sure those pumps last a while. That's the reason for the enclosure, and that's also the reason for having a roof that comes off in case we have to work on one of the pumps. So we put some work into this one. I think we're, we're getting closer, and I think it'll add some life to the pumps.
Thank you, Mickey.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah. Oh, am I the, I'm the chair. No, you're the chair of that committee.
Policy update. So we were tackling the policies. We took the first four that are mandated by the state. We had a group document that was really spearheaded by Rachel, thank you, Rachel, who did most of the work. So we're mostly taking New York State recommendations on the four policies. So four policies down, and we're having the first reading tonight, if anyone would like to read them. The first reading's tonight, and then we'll have the second reading next month, and then we'll vote on them.
Yep, vote on them.
And then we'll go on to the next policies and keep tackling more. And then we'll go on to the next policies and keep talking more.
Yep. Any questions? Did anybody have any questions or changes or comments to these required policies? No? Okay. Um, I think we've covered committee reports, uh, you spoke.
We just need a resolution to accept them for.
Oh, for the first reading?
For the first reading.
Okay.
And the policies are posted on board notes.
Yeah.
I would just also like to comment that although, um, they are required and we're first, uh, we're first, uh, the board's first approving them now, uh, we have been following these in practice.
And, and Sue, I'd like to make one more committee report on the foundation.
Uh, before we do that, can we, we just need a motion to approve the first reading for the four required policies?
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This is time? Okay. All right, a quick, uh, we had a foundation meeting, and I'm lucky enough to serve on the foundation as the liaison, because this is, this is one of those places where you go to these meetings and we're talking about the world of possibilities. What are the things that we can bring to the school that will help enhance everything that we're already doing? And I leave these meetings very grateful. The Bronxville School Foundation's annual deal has started, and, um, I'm not, I can't go too far, but I would, what I will say is that the foundation's goal is a hundred percent participation from the families in the school this year. And I'm really excited to see how far we can get, and to that, to that end, the foundation's biggest fundraiser of the year is the Katie Welling Memorial Run, which is two-point-five-mile walk run, I should say, and it's coming up on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, right in front of the school. We also heard from the foundation's two students as, and by way of update, um, uh, two student representatives, and they updated us on the arts and athletic council with real-time feedback on existing Bronxville School, School Foundation grants and how we're doing against them, so I love seeing that from the students. They talked a lot about what it is that we've given them in the past and how it's actually working, and it was a, it was an amazing presentation. Our high school principal, Ann Meyer, discussed two grants, grants that we've been, um, that we made, and on the impact, and, and the impact that they've had on the high school. One was on AI, an AI course taught by the graduate students, which is amazing, guys. I work in healthcare technology, and I'll tell you that to have this in high school is a pretty amazing thing. And to have our kids exposed to this puts us in the leading edge of what other schools are doing, and it's, it's incredible to see that happening. One of the students reported on that, the other was on the, uh, was on teen mental health and first aid training, and that's super needed, and given, given what's happening today, post-pandemic. Um, and, and that was one of the other ones that Ann Meyer reported on. Dr. Kelly also updated the foundation board on, on the school updates, including the tri-state, tri-state visit, I won't steal your thunder on that, but it was a great visit, um, and a great foundation meeting all around. Again, uh, I feel privileged to be, uh, the liaison on the foundation's board, we're doing a lot of great work there.
Thank you, Mickey. Um, this brings us to the public comment portion of the meeting, that's another time at the end of the meeting where the board is eager to hear any comments or, um, statements from the public. We ask that you please identify yourself when you speak, um, we'd like to know your name. If, um, we generally don't answer questions or, or have back and forth, if it's a, a very quick factual thing that we can clarify, we will sometimes do that, but for the most part, we're just eager to hear, um, any comments or statements that you'd like to make.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Simos Demis, and, uh, I'm here tonight with our seminar in an equity class. Uh, so we just finished our most recent unit on the purpose of education, and so we had a lot of debates, papers, uh, we actually even watched the March and February twenty-twenty-two board meetings, um, which I'm not sure if you're familiar, but pretty, pretty contentious, a lot of intensity. Uh, but we're really impressed by the reaction of the board and also really how the community came together from that. Um, over the past, past two weeks, um, I was really fortunate to address the tri-states committee and then also the Bronxville faculty. So our relationship, uh, as a senior bachelor graduate with education in Bronxville, and I started those talks, um, with an observation, that our village of Bronxville sits at the intersection of Midland and Pond Field. But where our community of Bronxville really sits is at the intersection of being and becoming. That's where our community is. And, but for each board member here, each administrator, each teacher, each parent, none of us would be standing here, it wouldn't be the people that we are today. And I was especially, um, my favorite part of the tri-states was the closing ceremony, and Dr. Ketty, uh, gave some words, and one of them was in response to a question, and I wanna just read, read what she said. One of the tri-states committee members was asking, you know, about whether the promise would interfere with academic excellence at Bronxville. And this is what she said, "Here at Bronxville, our purpose isn't to send students to the best colleges in the country. We do that, but it's not our purpose. Our purpose is to create good human beings who will change the world." It's pretty amazing. Um, and the other thing is, I thought it was sort of fitting, we also did some philosophy, uh, work, and, you know, you guys are sort of the guardians, as Plato would say, uh, of our educational system here. And I'd like to turn, uh, now to Aristotle to really summarize our thanks to you, what you do, really, you know, taking these weighty matters, our lives, and doing the best that happens. So I'll read, um, just a quick quote, uh, from Book Eight of Politics. So, here it is, "We now see that we shall have to legislate on the subject of education, and that education must be public, but we must not overlook the question of the character and method of this education. There is no agreement as to what the young should learn, either with the view the production of goodness or the best life, nor is it settled whether we ought to keep the intellect or the character chiefly reviewed." So here in this quote, Aristotle is talking about, you know, the struggle people have with trying to relegate matters of education, how we carry them out. For him, that was all about, you know, happiness, achieving the greatest personal potential of each person. But I thought that here at Bronxville, not only is academic excellence and virtue possible, but it's our chief aim, and we have a huge thank for that. So thank you very much, and now I'll turn it over to my fellow classmates, if they have some more personal comments they'd like to make.
Uh, hello, my name is Teddy Grammons, I'm a senior here at Bronxville High School. Uh, and we just wanted to take this time to voice our appreciation for some of the teachers that have had a big influence on us. So one of the teachers that has had a major influence on me is Miss Abel, she provided, she's our, uh, she's my tenth grade English teacher. She provided a really well-rounded experience, including the whole class, and it made it truly enjoyable for, um, for all the students in the class, but you don't really see much of, I had her, her first year at school, you don't really see that much of her first year, she was a first-year teacher. Uh, it's one of those classes that you really look forward to, uh, you marked it up on your schedule, and when you knew you had that class, like everyone was excited to go in, uh, because she makes the class so inclusive for all students. So one thing that stood out with me, uh, to me at the end of the year, uh, was we, remember you were at Shawshank or Dension? She, uh, she gave everyone a book award from a book, uh, a certain character from the book that really related to like your personal character traits, your strong character traits. And you could tell there was a different energy in the room after everyone saw their different, uh, character traits, because they really related to them and how they grown as a student in her classroom. She really understood us as students and people, she appreciated us just like we appreciated her, uh, and we don't often receive that appreciation from teachers, so that's more the check and shout out to her.
Hi, I'm Leah O'Connor, I'm also a senior at Bronxville High School, again, in the same class, um, here again to present another teacher who's done an amazing job. Ms. Candino has provided us with an amazing, well-rounded experience here in Bronxville. Many of us had her in middle school a long time ago as a history teacher, and since then she's been moved up to the high school and has continued doing an absolutely amazing and stellar job adapting to the new teaching environment. She has truly, like, embodied everything a teacher at the school should through meeting, um, important and sounding discussions during class time, and also finding time to sit down with students and discuss materials on deeper level system, strengthen understanding. I would like to truly commend her on making this difficult change and express to the board the importance of teachers like her within Bronxville who exhibit such dedication and continuing our longstanding tradition of academic excellence.
So we also have a few things that we'd like to share with all of you that we think can improve, improve our, uh, school experience. So on a personal note, I came to Bronxville as a freshman, we moved after COVID, and, um, I was a new student, and I was fortunate enough to know some of the students here before, from sports experience through outside of school sports, so I was lucky to have a couple built-in friends when I got here. But I've noticed with other new students around the school is that not many people are that fortunate enough to have friends that, that are, that are built in, like right when they get to the school. And you can tell there's definitely a big difficulty of finding friends in a town where there's such a tight-knit community, and it's grown up together their whole life, so it can definitely be difficult. It can be seen, it's seen, see, it can seem that the students have dropped into classes and have to just figure out their, uh, social environment. But the high school has done a really great job improving the freshman transition program, which is, uh, very added to all freshmen, there's a great feedback from that. And so I was just thinking it might be helpful to have something similar for the new students, um, to help them, uh, fit in as well.
Hello, my name is Leah Sullivan, I'm a senior here at Bronxville High School, and I'd like to discuss the arts program for a second. Uh, we recognize the school as a whole, and we're working on improving more access to the arts, and we see this as work in progress. Uh, we urge you to start giving more funding focused our arts program, which sometimes really can get lost between the boards of academics and lawyers.
Hi, I'm Ms. Haley Fino. And I'm a junior at Bronxville High School, and first off, I'd like to commend this educational institution. I feel that it is, at least in comparison with other schools, uh, amazing at prioritizing the mental health of the student body. I'm here to ask me to continue that precedent and continue that great work, um, and to continue implementing the mental health resources that a student so desperately needs, um, and maintain consistency within it. Um, as an individual who suffers with BPD, um, the counseling I receive from the school's gifted group of psychologists has been immensely helpful and truly worth more than words can express. Yet it shouldn't take somebody to have such a disorder to receive that help. Hence, I urge the board and the s, the school administrators to focus on not only prioritizing, but promoting the school's mental health reward resources. It shouldn't take walking up to the fourth floor and saying a sign on the window that says, "If you wanna talk, we're here," to realize that there are a lot of people that our school has to offer for people to really express what they need to get out, maybe express feelings. And I urge the board to stay ever vigilant in the pursuit of creating a school environment that stresses the importance of the students' well-being. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Konstantinos Kalitzos. Uh, I came here in fifth grade, I'm a junior right now, and up until this time I've never experienced subword reading before, and I think that a lot of students don't realize how much time and effort you guys put into making this community all that it can be and all that it is, so I just wanted to connect here and thank you for your service and time. Oh, yeah, and also, um, leading up to this, we've also talked about some improvements that we wanna make, and we also have, uh, set plans and motion to talk to Ann Meyer about the improvements that we might wanna see. Thank you.
This is really terrific feedback, thank you so much for being so thoughtful and taking the time to share with us.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And so brave. We, we thank you for taking the time to do that, this was, it's, it's so helpful for us, thank you.
Any other, uh, comments? Hi. Uh, Brian, is there anything?
Okay.
Nothing, TV land. All right, thank you again, there's nothing further than could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Wow, that's for the other.
Stellar as always, Brian. And way to pull, way to pull that fan out.